What's the date today? July 28th? I shouldn't have brought up these other subjects. We were in there for a while.
He's gotta run, he's gotta learn how to run meetings.
I've had a day.
That's a, that's every day, bro.
Yeah. I'm in the courthouse. You were there? My daughter. There, okay, that's all. Yeah, I'm talking about you. Maybe you did. It's now coming to head. It's just a thing. We'll get through it. Does everybody get one of these? Well, that's for next meeting, isn't it? Hey, I never asked Kevin what he wanted to do. I never asked Kevin about if he ever sent it or not. Is that for counsel for her?
She's not here, it's board of works.
He's here now. Okay. You ready?
Sure.
Okay. Are we live? Let's call the order of the July 28th, 2025 Board of Public Works and Safety Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Listonberger?
Here.
Paul? Becker?
Here.
Milner?
Here.
Morrow?
Here.
Very good, thank you. Would somebody like to make a motion to approve our amendments from our last meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Thank you. Board members, any tonight?
I have nothing, thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing either, so heading on down. We'll start through our, Donnie?
I have nothing to add, John.
Okay. Dan?
I do have one thing. I want to give the board an update on the sidewalk project that we're using the Harper money for. That original contract was $330,000 and eight, $330,861. It's pretty much substantially complete. There's some restoration work that needs to happen on the disturbed areas. And we have been negotiating with the contractor on quantities for completing the work. We had some overages and under on estimated quantities when the project was bid. They're asking for a little bit more for the driveway modifications. Altogether, the net changing contract price, they're asking for an additional $2,323.75. That brings the total cost to $333,184.75. And they are also asking for a seven-day increase in time to complete the work. And being that they did the work, did it well, I'm kind of recommending not approve the change order.
You kind of are, or kind of are, you are.
So, wait, okay, I'm confused. Is the change order?
If you have any questions, I'll know.
Well, okay, is the change order the length of time, or is it?
Yeah, it would increase it a week.
So, and then the dollar amount, really, isn't that a council question, or not?
No, the change order would be as part of works.
For the?
Yeah, for the.
For the length of time and the dollar amount?
Yes, extra dollar amount.
And that, that's why, okay, I got you now.
And what was the dollar amount again, two thousand?
$2,323.75.
Twenty-three?
Yes, twenty-three, twenty-three point seven-five.
Yeah. And it's your opinion, Dan, and your assessment that, is it because of the driveway modifications that drew this?
Mostly.
Mostly? And the project?
It's very difficult to anticipate what they're gonna do to make the sidewalk ADA accessible. We had to modify the drives and then to make them look acceptable to the owners.
So, overall, the project went really well, right? And?
I'd say so.
It went pretty smooth, pretty quick.
That's what I was hearing throughout the process anyway, so.
I hate to spring this on you, but.
That's all right. So, $320,000 was the budget, was the project?
Though, the total project cost was $330,861. That was the original contract amount.
Okay.
With the change order, the total will be $333,184.75.
This is a more brainer to me.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's one percent.
And we do have, we do have funds, we were looking at this, and we do have funds that we should be able to cover that.
I make a motion, we approve the request.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. That's all. Unless there's any other questions.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, Dennis?
Mr. Patel is online. He is asking that the fines be waived. Just screwed up everything.
Your first on the agenda is the market move on?
That was tabled.
Okay.
Or it was, they had, they had thirty days, so I haven't heard anything.
So, no updates on that?
No updates.
Okay, is everybody okay with that?
Red Rock Asset, Mr. Patel's online. He's asking for forgiveness. This started on June 2nd. He came into town. I issued basically a more detailed order to him on June 10th. His contractor did not come in to even apply for a permit until July 2nd and did not provide insurance. So, the project got put on hold. I did not receive anything that the contractor had insurance until basically July 22nd, because they sent it after hours on 21st.
So, just, that's just last week?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, he was well beyond the thirty days before his contractor ever got it, provided insurance. And he was at the thirty-day mark when his contractor even came in to even talk to me about the project. So, I say, fine stands. That's up to you guys to decide.
Does anybody have a question for Dennis right now? We do have, the Patel's online, and we can give them a moment?
Did he have the insurance at the time?
Speak up.
Did he have the insurance at the time, or was it purchased after the fine?
It was purchased after.
So, the contractor?
The contractor did not actually get insurance until?
July 16th.
Correct.
The medium is 14th. Thank you, Dennis. So, basically, they were on the job when you found them without insurance. Is that correct?
No, the contractor came in and talked to me, applied for a permit. My secretary told him he has to provide the insurance, proof of insurance. And he said he would do that, and then he left, and we never heard anything. I put the permit on hold because I was still waiting that this contractor actually could prove that he had insurance. And he didn't even get insurance until July 16th.
Excuse me, I must have confused. When you told us, two weeks ago, that you were at the airport and you saw activity?
That was one of the downstairs tenants that Mr. Patel has kind of helped do maintenance, clean up. They were upstairs, like, basically ripping out the carpet and all.
Oh, I was saying.
It was not the actual contractor, no.
Anybody else from this board? All right, the Patel's are with us. Hello there. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. As soon as we received that letter, we hired the contractor, as well as we hired the structural engineer. It's happened within thirty days. If Danny says, but he contacted Mr. Dennis before thirty days, and he applied already in thirty days, but they say you have to do this, you have to do this, so he?
The process is already starting.
The process, everything starts. I talked to the contractor, and we are leaving in New Jersey. So, we keep in touch with everyone, one by one. And my work already starts, we got some several pictures. And Danny talked to my structural engineer before thirty days.
Because we hired the structural engineer on 6/10/25. And we prepared the property, we give the report on 6/18/25. And on 6/24, we already have a contract with the contract, hours, length we need. And we already in the process of eviction, we will take the people upstairs. And so then, in the first week, we put in.
It's very hard to go all like thirty people, thirty tenants, within two weeks, it's terrible.
But still, we need that, before ten.
Right. And one day, Danny say he watching us, there's no problem, no tenant. I'm saying, there is no tenant upstairs. He's watching my colleague and water supply guy, he bring the salt, he don't know that. And by accident, he go up, my, what we eat upstairs, so he did it upstairs. Then, as soon as we realize, I told him, because he's usual. Every delivery like he, every month, he come up there. So, after that, and I told my maintenance guy, and he lock that door, and he's checking couple of the rooms. So, after that, nobody go upstairs. And I agree, I understand, whatever Danny says, yeah, he's watching. But there is no tenant, I'm saying, I know. Except my maintenance guy, one time. So, and he says, we have some pictures, it's work start already. And it's not delayed, it's because of the couple week for the eviction process. Like, I had to arrange all thirty people, it's hard. And Miss Connie and other people also, they helping us, and we know that, we have a couple meeting. So, I'm just saying, whatever the fees, I know, it's not the, the, you guys, but twenty-five hundred is too much for us, because we got like, almost half these days. I'm not saying just give the break for the property checks, you know what I mean? I'm not saying like that. This is, this is not fair. Whatever you guys make the decision, so just think for that. And whatever we have agreed, we, we, in touch with the decision. So, as soon as my contractors finished, we call them and just came and checked.
Right now, he's working on the north side steps, you know, the ladder. And as soon as he done, he don't call Danny, he can see, he can approve, and then he can start the further work. And it's between like contractor, we order the metal parts, and everything, everything is already started. So, all things should be the lines, like, you know? So, it's not take a one person work, everybody. So, it's not like a one-day job with the one person.
As I did report, I think a month ago, Mr. Patel did have a structural engineer prepare paperwork. It comes down to, he talked to the contractor, the contractor came in, talked to me. But when he came in to talk to me, he was already at the thirty-day mark and then waited before he ever provided it.
Do you have a copy of the contract, so you know the scope of work that the contractor's doing?
I have what the engineer provided me.
What about the contractor?
No. The contractor came in and he said that he was gonna start on, as Patel said, they were gonna start on the north stairs. He was gonna break out all the concrete, start doing all the iron work, and then call me out to look at it before he did anything else.
And they haven't called you for that yet?
I haven't been out there yet, no.
Okay.
He has not contacted me.
He can have contact with the contractor on 6/24/25. He can see, or I can send the copy.
Just to clarify the legal decision here. So, the original order that Dennis issued on June 10th, the language that Dennis uses tracks the statute very closely. He does a very good job of preparing these orders. And what the order states is, it gives a list of things that need to be addressed, the items to take action on. It does go on to say that if you do not comply with this order and substantially begin repairs within thirty days, the city of Plymouth may direct a contractor to perform the repairs at your cost and may seek enforcement over the order. That's what incurred the penalty for not substantially beginning the repairs. If I understand correctly, the Patel's argument is that they had hired the structural engineer within thirty days and were preparing to move forward to have the repairs completed. And Dennis's position at the last meeting was that the contractor had come in to get a permit, but it had not been issued because they had not provided insurance. So, really, the question for you in deciding whether to affirm that penalty or waive it is whether or not the actions they took count as substantially beginning the repairs within the thirty days from June 10th, which would be until July 10th.
Okay, so.
Anything else to add, Mr. or Mrs. Patel?
No, I mean, what can we do? You guys have to understand.
Yeah, because it's for a one-person job, like, if I have to do, I do myself. But it's like, all other people are involved, so we have to depend on everybody.
And we are not local. You think, we trying to plan out, I think, sound like a couple like local labor people, but no. I want like a professional work, like a job, that's why I hired a couple of people. And first one, it was the, I think you guys remember, I bring that guy. It was, he came couple time, he came with me, but I look like he's not reliable for me, so I hired a second contractor. And I think it's a nice guy, to do like a nice work, yeah, and he did a good job.
Can I ask you who that is?
He was in that meeting, very first meeting.
No, no, I mean, the one that you've hired now.
Right. It's Thomas, that's me.
You know this?
Voodoo Construction.
Voodoo Construction. It's called Voodoo Construction?
Yeah. And he's, yeah, he's a professional guy. So, I mean, see, I, I don't want like a hassle, like, for everyone. If we call couple times, he's like, disturb you or everything, no. If he do good job, takes little extra time, I understand. And I just say again, like, I'm not local, I mean, New Jersey, since I come, we think not like two, three times, these times. But anyway, whatever you can make the decision, that's, you cannot do anything after that, yeah.
Yep.
I need to clarify, it's Voodoo Dreamworks LLC.
Yeah. I gave you the contract, like, forty-six thousand dollars, yeah.
Bottom line is, nothing got started until?
There was no actual construction started until after the fine was issued.
That's what I understand. Based on the information that's been provided to us by our building commissioner, I make a motion to affirm the fine remains.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I have one more question, again, for the home and security office. We ran up there on Thursday in Indianapolis. And they say, there's no way to, like, you know, change the code or anything. Just do like extended stay, and we stopped by personally. Now, they need some paperwork from me, so I sent an email on Friday, so that we try to contact them as a piece for that too. So, that's for another point, yeah.
Does everybody understand that? If I understood it correct, he's changing for?
He's trying to change the use of the building.
Yeah.
Because?
So, you started that process and have not heard back, basically?
Yeah, we started process, but see, I mean, the guy says, home and security, he's reveal all everything, and he says, he can, can we touch you a week?
Okay, so you started that process, basically?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
So, the fine stays, and that is the determination. Keep us updated, please. Okay, moving on.
Next thing I have is the point. They're not demoed the building?
Nobody's here.
They're past their... They don't, they don't have that right anymore.
Okay.
It's now up to you guys to decide if you want to allow me to send, open it up for bids to have it demoed out. It would be demoed and then? Put on their property, on their bill.
I heard rumor that someone's trying to buy it?
It's listed for sale.
Oh, okay.
The demo order goes with the property.
And they gotta come back to me.
And they would have to come in.
Is it causing any problems right now as it sits? Is there any dangers, anything like that?
John, have you had any further calls?
No, nobody's, just that they've seen anybody or anything.
They've got it secure?
Aye.
We think, right?
We thought it was secure before.
Yeah. Keeping up with the law and all that.
That's iffy.
Iffy? Well, I mean, this would be a consideration. Any ideas on what it might cost to? I don't want to go through the, put you, give you another job to do, but you could pick quotes on it, I mean.
That's what I think needs to happen, at least get the quotes.
And we're not hearing anything back from the owners?
No. They had ten days from the time that they received. They had ten days from the time they received to file, basically, with the judge.
Approved for order.
Yeah.
If we just get quotes, it's not gonna hurt anything. Just letting get quotes and see what happens. And then, hopefully, maybe they'll hear, but I'll put that in the motion.
Yes, speak up, please.
It's hard to hear at home.
Sorry. I'm gonna make a motion that we allow the building inspector to get quotes on what it's gonna cost to take it down before that does.
We have a motion, and we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second. Any further discussion?
Just how long are we gonna continue lingering with this project? What do you think? I mean, you spent so much time on this thing, and it's not fair to you.
If I had my way, I would really like to have all the bids opened up at the next meeting and then award it to whoever happens to be the lowest bidder.
I'm just worried about what it might cost. It's, that's a substantial building to take down, hallway, and?
But it's, this is taking up a lot of time.
But it's good information to have if we put it in next year's budget. That might be the wise thing to do. We know roughly what it costs. I hate to put people through this process, but we don't do it until next year. But we don't have it in the bu... I think it's gonna be costly. Seems to me you don't have it in the budget.
I will say that if you do not want to tear it down, then I would like to issue an order to board it up.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a bad idea. But we?
Well, let's, let's get the, I'd suggest we move forward with the cost, get the quotes.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to get bids. Doesn't mean we have to act on them.
And if we don't want to do that.
Give us an idea. Okay. So, we have a motion, second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Paul?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
Now, do you want to continue to talk about? Should it be boarded up? I mean?
Technically, nobody's supposed to be in there. They've stopped work on it, so nobody should be in there. We can, we can discuss that at the next meeting.
Yeah, next meeting.
That'd be the next.
We look forward to that, Dennis. We always do.
Just as a point, if it's for sale, somebody's going in, if somebody wants to look at it, so.
All right.
That's true.
All right, well. Thank you, Dennis. Chief, how?
Nothing tonight, your honor, thank you.
Chief, where?
Hi. Received a quote from Kessler Police Supply for the Glock nine millimeter, model forty-five. I sent everybody an email, including Shiloh, this time. So, you guys could look it over.
Okay, you didn't order it, yeah?
No, she wasn't.
Yeah, okay, that, that's right. I guess when we were talking, I thought you?
I was trying to get this done.
But you did get a wire. I think that they're gonna honor the two fifty trade-in?
Yes, they said they would honor it.
That's what you were telling me.
Yeah, because they said, if I wouldn't have called that week, then yes, they would not honor it.
Okay.
Because they're not taking any more of those guns in on trade.
So, this quote that we received, is that was, I can't, I don't remember the exact number, what was that compared to the estimate that you were throwing out at the last meeting?
When I said at the last meeting, I said the guns should come in below five hundred, and then that was, we were thinking we were gonna keep the optics. Well, the optics will not, they will fit on the gun, but we can't get a holster for the gun with the SIG optics on a Glock handgun. So, we had to go?
And the holster?
Pardon?
Is it a Safari Land?
Safari Land Level III holster, yes.
I was told by?
Speak up, please.
I was told that that holster's been rearranged by Safari Land.
Yes, they make one for the Glock with their optic, but not taking the SIG optic off our, oh, I don't even carry mine anymore, but off the current guns we have. So, so we went with the new optic price. So, yes, it did come in more because of the optics. So, for the twenty-seven Glock Model 45s, the total price came in at nineteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars for twenty-three of the right-handed holsters for that gun and optic. And flashlight was gonna be thirty-five hundred, forty-two dollars. Two left-hand holsters would come in at three hundred and eight dollars. And then, they will give us two hundred and fifty dollars trade-in for twenty-seven SIG P320. give us two hundred and fifty dollars trade-in for twenty-seven SIG P three twenty handguns, which will subtract six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and then shipping for a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a total of seventeen thousand thirty-nine dollars.
What's the lead time on these?
Four months from the time I ordered.
Wow.
So I put out an email to all of my officers advising them if they wanted to get a different gun, the school won't allow us in the school with our, these, I don't, I keep going for mine, I already replaced my gun. The school won't allow us in with our issued three twenties. So our SRO officers, Corporal Height bought their own Glock to carry and Officer De Lee is carrying his old forty-five that was issued the last round that he purchased back. And then we have several officers that have bought their own guns. So I told them as long as it's a quality gun that we approved and they bought a level three holster to carry it in, that's in our rules and regs, they can carry a different gun until we get our new ones in.
Now, the different guns, would they be a Glock or would be something somewhere between?
Some, two people have bought, well, three total have bought Glock so far. One's carrying the SIG forty-five, one's purchasing a Shadow Systems, which is a high-end one. One's purchasing an FN seven oh nine.
Okay, so...
So they're different variations, but they're quality guns.
But there's no...
There's not going to be any consistency with firearms because we can't mandate what they buy because we're, the city's not buying them. They're buying it with their own personal money. Now, they're buying holsters and ammo or whatnot with their uniform allowance. For that part, they can do, but the gun we cannot purchase with our clothing allowance.
So seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand and thirty-nine dollars.
Can we have the rear, come up with the rear?
Do we have the...
Rear pro.
He would need to take it out of his equipment, I did.
And do you have that?
Yes.
Okay.
Seventy dollars and more for a holster than what he originally told you to be sold.
Right. I'm going to make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, second, any further discussion? You know, I feel like this, this is a no-brainer.
It is.
And this sense of peace and, you know, I know that some of the officers are, they're not allowed, wives don't want to bring them in, stuff like that.
Well, I didn't want to go into daycare with mine, that's why I just went out and bought a different one. I just, it was less stress. And then the Air Force just issued, one of their, Air Force security was shot with one last Wednesday.
Right.
It was sitting on his end table in a holster and walking by and it went off and killed him.
Yep.
So Air Force issued a memo that they're no longer carrying them.
Was the Indiana State Police, they had a contract for that gun. Are they changing it or staying?
They, when I talked to one of the troopers, they said they were looking at the Glock. So I don't know what they decided or what they're doing, but I got a text message asking about what we have learned and I told them easiest way is Google it. You can find all the information and on it.
Yeah, I do too.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Call?
Yes.
Becker?
Yes.
Milner?
Yes.
Morrow?
Yes.
Listonberger?
Yes.
Anything else? Nope.
Oh, we're doing the level two part of the active shooter training that's currently going on today and tomorrow from, it's the second part from last year's. We have, I think, twenty-seven showed up out of the thirty-two that were invited or supposed to...
Is that, that includes EMS?
Twenty, well, it was supposed to be twenty law enforcement from the county, surrounding, or our whole county, ten fire EMS from surrounding agencies and two dispatchers.
So you had a good turnout today?
Yeah, we had twenty-seven show up for the training today and tomorrow. So I would invite you then, stop by tomorrow.
Today was, I couldn't...
Yeah, today was, it was hot.
It was kind of busy today, it wasn't because of the weather. Yeah. What's that all about? Mr. Marquet?
Thank you, your honor, one item I have on, we took delivery of a large single last dump truck last Wednesday. It's actually been on order for a year and a half. It got better than our last one, I can get in it. So with that being on Wednesday and all the paperwork is dated on Wednesday, I was talking with the clerk, treasurer, and she said to ask you folks if we can go ahead and add this purchase order and claim to this docket right now that you're going to approve and then they can process it tomorrow and we can get the check to them to get our certificate of origin, because everything's dated now, last Wednesday. And we like to get it done and paid so we can get through the BMV without penalties and they got them like that, so.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Unanimous. Thank you, Jim. Mike Collins?
I have nothing to say.
Oh, you are here, oh, you're over there, okay. Mike Height?
Nothing tonight, your honor, thank you, crafty.
Hey, Mike, how's the bridge coming?
Just fine, um, and then they are getting at the county project.
I understand that.
It will be, um, passable by Blueberry.
Good.
That's what they tell me.
All right. Good news, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Bill Shealy?
Nothing tonight, your honor, thank you.
City attorney?
Nothing tonight, your honor.
Clerk Treasurer, you got a few things?
All right, first on your agenda was the tableed fire pit ordinance or request, are we doing?
And that has been rescinded.
Rescinded, okay.
So that's off the table.
Okay, thank you. First request this evening is Abby Collins is asking for prepayment of the following entertainment services related to the Family Fun Day in 2025. Seven hundred and seventy-five dollars to be paid to Ginsy Harton, main entertainer for the event, three hundred and forty dollars to be paid to Lake City Bounce LLC, the bounce house rental. They are asking for these checks to be available on the Family Fun Day on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. That event is at River Park Square from six to eight p.m.
Some moved.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Okay. Your second request this evening comes from Patty Walsh of St. Michael's Parish, who is asking for the alley to be closed on Saturday, October fourth, twenty twenty-five from noon until ten p.m., or eleven p.m., sorry, for the St. Michael's Fall Festival. And Patty is here, if you have questions, on up, Patty.
Patty, you want to come up? Pass rates, that time again already.
Is that time again, yeah. Annual Fall Festival. So, yeah, so Saturday, we're going to have it from, well, it's like four to six, we're doing chicken and noodles in the school and then six to ten, we'll be outside for the beer fest.
Good motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. It's unanimous, Patty.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other business? All entertaining motions to approve of their claims?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. And number nine, acceptance of communications?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
And number ten?
Motion to adjourn.
Very good. Okay. Got through that. This is locker, this is locker. Less than one percent. Haven't seen you for a while. Man, it's ninety-one percent, that's like seven tenths of a percent. Do good jobs. Sure. Need to get out of here? Yeah, I don't think, um, I don't think so. Yeah, don't breathe on me. No problem.
Take care, chief.
Hydrate. Absolutely.
Yes, they will not, they say that.
He doesn't smile, so let me make him smile.
That's, well, we have to...
So who did this? Think we should...
I know, I thought it was...
Did you manage to notice the dressing animals? Yes, we did. You what? To hear that. But hearing some, they're...
Can that be turned up so the audience can hear better? I don't know, we all need to speak louder, it's, I'm getting really confused. Yeah.
I thought Glock.
Right, yeah. Randy wasn't very loud, he was away from the microphone. I'm hungry, that salad didn't tie me over. Oh, there you go.
Well, we have speakers for the teams, but don't know...
Have I taken my house all secure now? Yeah, you did. I got, I could look at outside and, plus I got an alarm on the doors, motion detectors throughout the house, so.
Exactly, they're still sitting.
Yeah.
Do we still have...
Go ahead. Um, yeah. That's, I think it's a...
Conservation of...
We had one in person last week. That's it, I know of, I mean, it could have been others. They're supposed to contract with you.
Is that your hands?
No.
Something we have.
From historic downtown for the Indiana, where the beautiful...
I love it, I actually, that gives me, I'll tell you what, that gives me an idea that we can play music in between, before, in between meetings.
You got to talk to Kyle.
Okay.
He's going to be in charge.
We're going to get started here and say, we're all back here, aren't we? And the media table getting along tonight, okay? You two getting along, okay?
Are you friends now?
We've always been. Does she hate me and I don't know?
You guys ready?
Kind of funny, they both show up on the same night.
I know, that's weird.
I missed once, Jake. Once.
All right, everybody ready? I'd like to call the order, the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty-five Common Council Meeting. Who will lead us in prayer tonight?
Would you join me in prayer, please? Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you once again for the opportunity to freely come into this chamber to discuss the needs of this city. As we continue to move forward, Lord, we continue to ask you to give us the wisdom, the understanding and the guidance to make the best decisions possible for everybody within this community. We continue to pray for everybody within the state, this country and the world. We continue to seek peace and understanding and we ask that you continue to have your presence in our lives and everything that we do. Bless those who serve this city as employees. Pray for the administration, Lord, that they continue to lead with their wisdom as well. These things we ask in your gracious holy name, amen.
Thank you, councilman. You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselman call?
Here.
Becker?
Here.
Drop law?
Here.
Long and Becker?
Hey, I didn't hear from him either.
Randy was not going to be here tonight, he...
Well, you may have told me that too.
Yeah, see, I'm here for you.
Thank you.
Milner.
Here.
Morrow.
Here.
Star.
Here.
He may have told me, I don't know. What's that?
It was hot today.
Yeah, I got an excuse. I wasn't busy anyway, I was just hot out, so. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve our minutes from last meeting, please?
I moved your.
Thank you. And I have a second. Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, thank you. Um, what do we got up next here? Second, third readings, does somebody want to, who's presenting?
I can. Um, ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two forty-four, fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees by our employees personnel of the city of Plymouth, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-six, for second and third readings.
Make a motion, we pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two forty-four on second reading.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any questions or further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
I, I do just have something really quick.
Okay.
Just found a small error in, I already discussed it with Lynn. If you look at the promotions of the city coordinator, it's not divisible by twenty-four, so we just need to omit the O eight, and then it'll be good.
That sound right, yeah, okay.
So that's a motion to amend?
Yes.
The ordinance?
Thank you, yes. I'll make that motion that we amended.
A second. Or she can.
So.
Oh, I gotta take it off.
Well, you just did.
You, you.
No, you, you.
Okay.
It's on the table, now there's an amendment, so you can vote on the amendment.
Yeah.
And then you can vote on second reading as amended.
And next time around, do it with that included in that word, right? Okay, so we have, on the amendment, we have first and second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, unanimous?
I'll let somebody do third.
Now you have a motion on the table for second reason, reading with that amendment incorporated.
Then I'll make a motion that we approve.
You already have the motion and a second, you need a roll call vote for second reading.
I'll make up my mind here.
So we amended it, and now we're gonna.
Yeah, now we're gonna vote on the second reading.
With that change already. Got it.
Councilman called.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Krappel.
Yes.
Long and Ecker is absent. Milner.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Now you have third reading.
Well, what the heck. I'll make a motion, we pass ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two forty-four on third reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilman called. Ecker.
Yes.
Krappel.
Yes.
Long and Ecker is absent. Milner.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Very good. Okay, moving on down. Um, anything from the board this evening?
Yes. Uh, this is a positive thing, uh, and my, my class reunion was this last Saturday night at Opies. Several people who had not been here for ten years came from different states, and they made it a point to say how, how happy they were to see the improvements in downtown. They said it was just, just really dismal ten years ago when they were here and saw how downtown had just kind of fallen into disarray, and there wasn't much life in it, actually, and now it's, it's a happening place. And I just wanted to pass that on and say how proud I am to be part of that.
I will mention, um, we hosted a young adult gathering on Friday evening from five to six thirty, and we had about twenty, some young adults, and there was a few of us that were not young adults there. Right, Jamie? And, um, anyway, no, you're, anybody's welcome to join in. But overall, the enthusiasm of these young folks were really appreciated. What was really nice is they're eager to continue meeting and stuff, and they will be joining, you probably could have put this in your comprehensive plan update, but, uh, they will be joining our comprehensive plan committee as a subcommittee, working maybe with, in tune with empowerment, because that's kind of an empowerment thing, all voices are heard. And so, I told them, you want your voices heard, this is the quickest, easiest way to get your voices heard, channeling it through this program, and I see really good, I'm very hopeful, I'm very appreciative, and, uh, I'll keep you updated on how these young adults, um, and they had already a bunch of suggestions, and some actionable items were coming out of their mouths that we can now go through a committee process and get them implemented, so just wanted to update everybody on that. It was pretty, pretty cool.
I was there, just so you know.
Yes.
I was one of the young adults. It was great listening to people my age and younger and coming back from college and just things that they wish that Plymouth had, and it's like, you know, we were twenty before, and when you were twenty, this is what you wanted to do, and it's just kind of like bringing it back to perspective that, you know, there's so many things out there that you don't think about until you've gone and come back and you're just like, wow, we don't have that, or where did that go? So, I brought up Swan Lake and different places, not just here in town, but like all over Plymouth, that we have great things going around here, and we, one of the things we found out is we don't really do really great marketing.
No.
So if we can market better, or, you know.
Yeah.
Tell people what's happening, that would be a huge asset, yep.
And Kayla's young enough that she could actually communicate with them very well. She helped me through it a lot, so it was pretty good, so. Good, anyway, I wanted to update, and thank you for being there. Really appreciate it. All right, um, on down to the, do you have anything?
I don't have any.
Not for this section. Um, approval of donations.
Donations are good, yeah.
Okay, the city has received two donations, both in the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. The first one comes from Emily and Matthew Huskins, not sure what their business is. Um, the second one is from Hunter Transit. These are to be used to sponsor decals on the Plymouth Police Department squad cars. I'm asking if you wish to accept these donations with the restricted terms, conditions, and purposes attached to the donations. If so, the donation is already received into the monetary gift fund.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay, thank you.
Now I have something else for you. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eleven sixty-five, a resolution of the Common Council of the City of Plymouth to approve the application of Heartland Arts Center for a commercial revitalization rebate program grant. You have the application along with the resolution in your package, and Anna Kittsman is here. Um, I don't know how she's still awake, but, uh, um, she's apparently got enough energy to come here tonight, so I'm sure she can answer any questions.
Anna, would you like to go ahead? You didn't, last year after the festival, you took off, didn't you?
Yes, I'm.
You didn't do that.
I'm catching a plane in the morning, so. Yes, thank you for having me, Anna Kittsman from the Heartland Arts Center. Um, yes, we are requesting, um, uh, support through the revitalization rebate program to help with the cost of the roof, um, on the Heartland Arts Center. Um, I have, um, Brent Martin here to answer the technical questions, um, but I will do my best until then.
Do you have any questions? Pretty straight.
I mean, I don't see anything. Wolf. Which vendor were you gonna use? I said, here, they're both two thousand.
Yeah, we've received two bits of the same amount.
Illusion, is that what you said? I'm joking. I'll make a motion, we approve the request.
Same. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and I.
This is a, this is an ordinance.
That's a resolution.
It's a resolution. So I gotta make a motion, we pass resolution twenty twenty-five dash eleven sixty-five. Sorry about that, Jeff.
No problem. We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilman called.
Yes.
Ecker.
Yes.
Krappel.
Yes.
Milner.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yes.
Star.
Yes.
Long and Ecker is absent.
Just real quick, what's that dollar amount gonna equal for us?
Twenty-five dollars.
Twenty-five dollars.
Yeah, it's a max.
I thought so, the max. Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, um. Could recommend we continue to table under other business, um, the recent theater request, we're still working on it, need a little more time, and, uh, if that's okay, and nobody brings it up off the table, then we fine with that. Give me a little more time to work on this. Okay. Next up, we have M C D C quarterly update, is, uh, Mr. Hildebrand.
Good evening, Craig Hildebrand with Marshall County Economic Development Corporation. I just want to give you a quick quarterly update on, uh, uh, things that have happened here in the city and also in the county. Um, as you know, I think I've spoken about, we've had eighty-seven million dollars in CapEx, uh, investment here in the county so far this year. Uh, we have a couple of projects that are looming, they may make it this year, may, may not, it's always, you know, uh, an up in the air type of thing. So we're maybe twenty-five million more, uh, is the value of those investments, we'll see what happens. Uh, big part of that eighty-seven million, uh, as you know, Hoosier Tire, uh, asked for an abatement for sixteen point eight million on some personal property, and then Sequoia Argus has a, a big expansion going on down there. They are, uh, putting another hundred thousand square foot onto the building that they're presently in, and bringing some additional equipment in there, and some hiring, uh, that's a twenty-three million dollar expansion. And then, uh, they are actually starting a sister company, a campus, uh, uh, some of the same owners, but it will be a different entity, uh, doing similar, uh, wire extrusion, but it's looking at low voltage, uh, applications, and, uh, that's a twenty-five million dollar. That was actually a competitive process, uh, some of their ownership is out of Wisconsin, and they were looking at locations in Wisconsin, so I, I'm proud to say that we were able to, uh, compete and keep that here in Marshall County, so that was a good win for us. Um, I also wanted to address changes in the business personal property tax, uh, this past year, along with all your other, uh, options of taxes that they've changed on you and talked to you about. Um, business personal property tax, uh, we have kept a tax, uh, abatement policy, uh, as uniform as we can across the county so that the different communities aren't bidding against each other, you know, that, uh, it's, it's, uh, something that we've settled on, and you know our standard, uh, has been a seven-year phase-in tax. Now, if it was a very large, uh, project, we may negotiate something different, but it would be, that's pretty much our standard. With the business personal property tax, they have taken away the floor on what you can, uh, uh, depreciate, uh, the equipment down to. Before, it could only go down to thirty percent, and most of those companies would do that in a rapid depreciation. And, uh, so, uh, now that they have taken away that floor, a seven-year phase-in, they, they just about depreciated that equipment completely off their books before then. So, uh, what we're suggesting is that we could move to a five-year phase-in as a standard, uh, personal property tax abatement. Um, and, and I, I think it's, uh, no surprise either that this probably will be going away, business personal property tax. They tried to get rid of it this year, uh, I think once they can find some, uh, steady income to replace it, uh, it'll go away now, and they've given you all these other options of what you said, to generate tax revenue that, you know. I was kind of joking around there a little bit. But anyway, um, the other thing that they, uh, have done on that is, they used to use eighty-six thousand dollars was the exemption on, uh, personal property, that was not, uh, taxable, you know, that was, uh, they, I forget their word, the way they worded it, but now they've upped that to two million dollars. So the first two million dollars of, of personal property is, is not taxable. So, a- as you know, that will, uh, get rid of, uh, a lot of those one, two million dollar projects that we've, we've done in the past, you know, so, uh, they're no longer, uh, taxable. So that's just another reason to look at other ways to do that. Um, uh, I wanted to talk about one of the, uh, uh, company that's here in Plymouth and, and was announced, I know Mayor was there when we opened it up, was chatrx dot M V. Uh, Dr. Stillson's, uh, it was something that was developed here in Marshall County. It's a app that you can use, uh, and I took advantage of it this past week, I was a little under the weather, and I thought, you know, this is a chance to try this out, and it, it works remarkably well, and what, what I'm always reminded is that, uh, and he'll tell you that, uh, the A I behind it is about ninety-five percent accurate, you know, in making diagnosis, but a human doctor's only about seventy percent accurate. So, so this thing's more accurate than, than, uh, any one individual doctor. And I, I was really blown away with it when I used it, it's pretty accurate. And, uh, it's free to use if you don't need a prescription, or to only prescribe, uh, antibiotics. So if you have something that an antibiotic could, uh, take care of, uh, you might try it, chatrx dot M V. Uh, he's, uh, the brains behind that, he's located here in, uh, Marshall County, he has CFOs, some, uh, technical people. Uh, most of them are located here, there's a few that are working remote, you know, it's modern age, but, uh, we're really proud. We got him involved, uh, when he was, uh, rolling it out, uh, in the McCuskey competition. McCuskey is, uh, with Notre Dame, it's a, uh, oh, a, a competition for startups, and they pitch there, it's a pitch competition. And he, uh, did really well, he made the second round, we were really pleased about that, it's the first time anybody from Marshall County had, uh, made it that far.
I didn't know about that.
Yeah, and, and he, uh, he didn't win it, but he got a lot of good feedback, and actually, his CFO is a Notre Dame grad, one of the students that, you know, they, uh, latch on and help, and he got a really good hire out of it, so, uh, we wanna, we toot that horn at, you know, we got Marshall County involved. And that's one of the things we're working on here going, uh, as you know, entrepreneurs. Um, the state, the I E D C, they've announced their four pillars that they're really, their four areas that they're focusing on, and those are workforce training, uh, and you know that's been something we've worked on for quite a while, is, is training in that workforce. We're involved with the Marshall County Career Innovation Center, uh, we want to do more like that. I want to also mention that we have funding available through the regional partnership that if somebody's looking for training, uh, about half of the cost up to, I believe it's twenty-five hundred dollars per, um, employee, uh, can be reimbursed through the regional partnership, and it's, but it's gotta be an accredited program through like M E P or, I mean, Purdue is, is another one, things of that nature. So if you, if you're looking at doing some employee training, uh, we can help with that. The other, uh, three are, uh, existing businesses, and we, we always are talking about our B R and E, you know, uh, work that we do, and, and, uh, finding out what, how the local businesses are doing. And then, uh, Main Street and Entrepreneurs, as, and I was just talking about how we're working with that and, and doing more in that area. And then the last one is the regional strengths, they want to, uh, develop, uh, reg, work as regionally as, as possible throughout the state. Um, the north central Indiana here with, uh, South Bend, Elkhart, Marshall County, was developed back during the, uh, Regional Cities Initiative, and it's been a, kind of a model regional setup that when ready came along, there weren't a lot of these regional partnerships throughout the state. Of the fourteen that were, uh, made up to, to apply for ready money, uh, I think there were only five in existence when they started. And then, uh, so they, they had to come together, and they've learned that it's a really nice model, you know, where, uh, when, especially in attraction and extension and, uh, expansion, industries are looking for, uh, an area of, of, your workforce is no longer defined, defined by the county lines, you know. Our workforce consists of people that live in the region, you know, uh, people travel across county lines all the time, state line even, for, uh, work, and that, that is, uh, beneficial when you're talking about expanding and also attracting businesses. Um, I really didn't want to talk, take up too much time. I really didn't want to take up too much time because I know you've got a busy schedule, but that was just my update. If there's any questions or any input from anybody, I'll take that now. And always feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions or suggestions on things we need to do. I know most of you take advantage of that when you can, but I want, I welcome it and encourage it if you ever have a question or you think, hey, you know, Chick-fil-A's looking for somebody, you know. Let me know, okay? Because everybody's always looking for them. Thank you.
Just Greg, thank you for updating us again. Thank you. Up next is the Wild Rose Moon. We have several folks here from there. Come on up.
So I drew, I drew the short straw and I'm the one that gets to talk. My name is Paul DeBenedictus. I'm on the board of Wild Rose Moon. George Schrieker is the executive director and we're here for a request or proposal. Going to start a little bit differently. I know George is going to run the slides now, but before he does, if somebody that wants to speak, she's just, her schedule is really tight and she wanted to make a statement and she wouldn't mind.
Thank you. My name is Rachel. My son-
Can you give us your first, last name and address, please?
Rachel Holzer, H O L Z E R. My address is one zero zero one nine Yuppus Road. I think that's how you say it, right? I just moved here.
Yeah, that's right. That's how I said it.
Yeah. Well, Google says underpass. Anyway, so we just moved to this area, actually. And my son got an internship at the Wild Rose Moon and it has been awesome. And I just wanted to say what a great opportunity for people in the future to have because the younger people, it's such a family environment and the younger people can come in there and do things and be participants. And then they're here forever and then they bring their kids. So I just wanted to say what a wonderful place it is and, oh, you guys, I'm just so excited about it. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah.
So, um-
We're working on it.
Okay.
We're working on it.
I think I just need to stretch this out. So some of this, I can give you this quick background and just respect for your time. Again, my name is Paul DeBenedictus. I live in the county. I actually live down in Culver, four two four Forest Place. And joined the boards, the Board of the Moon about a year ago. And we're involved in taking the story of the moon out to the county and Michiana because it's a story that a lot of people think they know, but they don't. First, I want to thank the city of Plymouth for all the past support over the last ten years. The Wild Rose Moon has taken advantage of facade grants, actively work with the mayor's office when it comes to all the social media sites that you have and supporting our abilities. And we've even hijacked the mayor and he's been in one of our shows during our, the game show guest piece and he did very well. So first, I want to thank you for what has helped us come along. And the moon is where it is today, quite frankly, because of the positive environment we have in the city of Plymouth. And we think we're bringing something to the city of Plymouth that will help it going forward, as you mentioned, marketing and some of the other things that may allow you to really increase the city's visibility across Michiana and a little bit outside the state up in central parts of Michigan. So with that, George, we can go to the next slide. Starting off with a request, I'm going to save that to the very end. And we'll tell you why we're requesting this and what comes with it. But we're asking in your support of the moon over the next two fiscal years, a twenty-five thousand dollar a year sponsorship. And I'll tell you what that sponsorship includes, but that investment allows us to continue for our performances and we record our performances and put them on production both on public television and public radio across Michiana. And it brings your visibility of Plymouth well outside Marshall County. I'd like to say this is really a good cause. That's a good business decision as well. And, you know, we, our motto is we are arts in action in community. And we're probably very unique in that while we're a small venue, seventy seats for any one performance, because we have a strong production staff, we're able to film, record, and produce of a radio show and a television show that's put out once a month. One on W N I T, the other on W V P E with an average episode viewership and listenership combined of ten thousand people. And we'll go into some more detail, but this is kind of the sense of what we are. We, the support we ask for goes totally into our production of the show and are putting it out on television and radio. That's where this money goes. So let's go to the next slide. You know, the Wild Rose Moon, this year we did a public perception report, Michiana Public Perception Report. So all the references we make here are from that report. George has several copies of it. I believe we shared it with you in your three packets and glad to answer any questions on that. It's all annotated and where the data came from. The moon is a regional presence. You may know it from across the street and a lot of people, but what we hear, the nickname should be, "I never knew" or what you do that. But it is a regional presence. For the last almost ten years, we've been on W V P E. They've added us to the radio and given us more prominent positions than that. This past, this year, we've taken the moon and done a show up in South Bend at the, oh, at the late auditorium, at the late auditorium and had, Denny Snyder had a blues show, two-hundred-and-fifty people. The important part wasn't just the attendance, but the fact it's been filmed and it's showing, it showed on W V P E, I think this past month. And actually, Denny Snyder thinks he wants to make an album out of it and put that out there. So we go out, while also being on television, radio, we have a strong presence on the internet. So we are kind of built, we are built more as a venue for what happens in the future and telling people, we may, you may see us wherever you see us, but we're made here in Plymouth. This is our home. We highlight regional talent, national, international talent. But just underlying that point, everyone sees it in every, one of our shows and episodes that this occurs here in downtown Plymouth. Let's go to the next slide about a regional reach. The maps, so W N I T on the top, lower right-hand corner, W V P E. This is where it's seen and heard. Amanda Miller Kelly, who's the president of W N I T, is a big supporter. And she sees us as national quality, but regionally focused. And it is one of their key focuses going forward to develop and build the regional talent. We are, besides having our shows, we're regularly on Discover Michiana. We have regular access to those organizations. And the same with W V P E. We are a staple in their world. They come down and support us and they highlight us. And again, when I say us, it's, it is the Wild Rose Moon in Plymouth, Indiana. As part of our, we'll play this in just a second, but as, as part of our introduction, we cite where we are, the intersection of thirty and thirty-one. We talk about the Yellow River. We talk about the Reese. We mention, we mentioned Heartland. We just talked about, we are here in Plymouth. So that is the home that we bring people to. I'd like to think that someday in the future, we're kind of like the Ryman Theater where only a fraction of the people ever go there, but they all know where it is and they want to go and look at it. So with that, George, if you can switch over to that one piece.
And I did want to mention that in the, in fact, in the fall, in our fall series, we have a busload of people coming from-
Elkhart, yeah.
That are actually coming down to one of our radio shows. So that's really exciting that somebody wanted to do that.
Is that new this year?
Yeah, first time this year. And I'll give you some detail on the people we do get in because we took our numbers in twenty-four, but that's, that's a big step for us.
They've already booked out to have their dinner in Popeyes.
So don't let me down. We said we're a production house. You got to be able to do this quickly, George. Yeah.
We'll do the radio intro first?
Yeah.
Okay.
With you on the drive and fresh and good. From historic downtown Plymouth, Indiana, where the beautiful Reese Theater has been restored to its art deco prime, Heartland Art Center is breathing new life into the historic Montgomery Ward Building. And where the Lincoln Highway and the Michigan Road cross the banks of the beautiful Yellow River, it's the Wild Rose Moon Radio Hour.
So that's our opening. And that's actually, we started that opening before the Reese was finished. We started touting the Reese. And before Heartland secured their grant, we were touting Heartland's development. Now-
So while he's doing that, we really have a view that this is an arts entertainment, and probably dining sector that you can draw a lot of people into. We're leading on the arts piece and talking about that, the arts and entertainment, just really kind of blend together. So as we go forward with this, that's why we mentioned other entities. It's just, it's more than just a one-stop, one-show to come see. We don't make our living off of the seventy seats we sell in any particular one show. We make our living off the fact that others can, you know, ten thousand people will see or hear one of our shows. So sponsors in turn use that as leverage for their own use.
The following program is brought to you with generous support from Marshall County Tourism. Marshall County, we welcome you with a smile. And Marshall County Community Foundation, helping great ideas take flight.
So let me paint that picture for you.
And with additional support from the city of Plymouth, Indiana, John Laramore and Janet McCabe, and E. Lee Marshall and Paul DeBenedictus.
You can just stop that right now. So what usually goes at the beginning of our show, we put up anyone that sponsors, we charge a sponsorship fee. And when they sponsor, they'll have their logo up there with the underwriting on it, whether it's a business, because we have small businesses here that are sponsored. There we go. Let's do it again.
The following program is brought to you with generous support from Marshall County Tourism. Marshall County, we welcome you with a smile. And Marshall County Community Foundation, helping great ideas take flight. And with additional support from the city of Plymouth, Indiana, John Laramore and Janet McCabe, and E. Lee Marshall and Paul DeBenedictus.
But these have all been one-off. We've had people sponsor or entities sponsor one, two, or three shows, which is great initially, but it doesn't give you the brand build. That's why we're here talking to you about something a little bit different. In that you get it through repetition, you get it as we continue to grow. And since it shows up in every show, you wind up staying, it stays with the product. So when the show is rerun on N I T, that same introduction that you saw will show up or the one that you want for the city of Plymouth will show up. This takes me, if you have any questions, please, any questions, feel free to stop me at any point in time. We have a good reach. We have a good reputation. And that is leveraged when we work together with sponsors and branding with them. Everybody, just as a side note, in both of those areas that seeing and hearing us are all within driving distance of Plymouth. We started, I got anecdotal information where people are starting to come in to see where the theater is. They come in, we have people that come in, we're starting to track who's going out to meals. We're asking, we're going to try and do some work with, with some of the businesses on coupons and identification. So when they get a, they get a program, they're able to go out and if they decide to go out to eat that day or another one, we'll be able to track it back. Because we see this as all a way to pull and fill in. Let's go to the next slide.
We had a couple come in from North Judson three weeks ago. We had a, we had a couple come in from North Judson about three weeks ago and they came, they stopped specifically in downtown Plymouth to see the Wild Rose Moon because they had been watching the show on TV in North Judson and loved it so much, they wanted to visit. And so that was, that's the first time we've had that happen, but that was really exciting.
So on the public perception piece, I'm not going to belittle the point, just that we, we feel we bring something to anyone who sponsors and at the same time, that sponsorship adds credibility. And we see a convergence on both the city and the moon and being good for both. Going to the next slide, George. We took our twenty twenty-four numbers of the people that come to the moon. We sold about five hundred and fifty-some tickets that got placed after the year of twenty twenty-four. A third came out of the county. Or in this case, I'm sorry, forty-nine percent were in the county. Fifteen percent came out of state and the rest came from somewhere in Indiana. So they all came here. The majority, fifty-one percent, came from outside Marshall County to come to Plymouth. This is just our, at that time, eleven shows that we did for the Wild Rose Moon Radio Hour, the television radio show. We also do an open mic. We also do a comedy called Moonitix. And we have a summer theater program. Last time, last time we ran a specific play, this summer we're running comedy Saturday night, Under the Moonlight. And all those add up to about doubling those numbers. I can't say those other programs bring everyone in from out of state, but the majority do come from outside the county. So there's a way, there's a draw that we have and we think there may be a way that you link who's coming in to identifying with the city of Plymouth. Let's go to the next one, George. Recognition's multifold. You heard the radio introduction and that rides with every one of our radio shows. And it, we've had feedback on the quality of the artists that come in and the radio programs and the production. And as the president of N I T said, it's national quality. So they have no problem running this. Right now, we run on television right before Austin City Limits and right after Masterpiece on Saturday night, one of the prime, one of their prime spots. On radio, we run right now, I think right before All Things Considered or Marketplace on a prime Monday spot and are looking to move us to a couple others. Right, because of the issues and headwinds that public radio and public television are running into, the fact that they don't pay for regional television and regional radio makes them want to highlight us even more and use us in their lineups. So we're talking about that as well as on their social media, we're pulling some of our stuff and putting it out there too. So our intent is to make our reach bigger and to make the brand bigger. And the idea of putting the brand together with the city of Plymouth and ultimately as well, maybe with Marshall County, but certainly with the city of Plymouth makes sense. And it goes to the statement that I guess Ms. Starr made about ten years ago, you know, the way the town, the way downtown looked and how it is today. We would, talk about collaborative messaging, we would reshoot our opening video because we do have a video of the river. And as the song goes along, we'd reshoot it for the beginning of the fiscal year to optimize the Yellow River and through Plymouth. So we'd reshoot that to make it much more of a geographic lock-in to say, this is where we are. Let's go to the next slide. I think I'm just repeating, but it's, it's visibility, it's destination marketing and it has an economic impact. You heard Rachel talk about the ability of bringing young people here and wanting to stay here. We get, because what we're doing in production, we get more people that are coming from around the area to do work here in Plymouth with us. And we see that continuing. If we can go to the next slide. This you probably have seen before. The arts have a play in the economic health of any city. And we, along with the combination of the Reese, the combination of our restaurants and Heartland, starts to build a center, a center of gravity that helps you.
And the museum as well.
And the museum.
Which is very art, art strip.
So let me go to the next slide and that is repeating of the ask. This is more of a sponsorship in support of a good cause with a direct return, we believe. You know, they say, we're not the ones writing the check. You know, we believe it's with a direct return for the city of Plymouth. And I would love to answer any questions that you may have. And I would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody?
It'd be nice if you could put it right behind or right before Wait, Wait, Don't Tell Me. That's a great show, and I have seen your program on TV a few times. I can't sing, so it's enjoyable to watch others be able to perform. But I have seen, I have watched his show a few times.
One thing I wanted to mention is that...
George, you can come on up here. Just stay up here, George. Yeah.
Okay. One thing I wanted to mention is that the radio show is our, is a kind of flagship, but it wasn't intended to be the only product that we produce. We're really out to create through a not-for-profit, a production house that creates more than one program. And in fact, both the NPR station and the PBS station that we work with, both want more product. And we have several ideas for products already in the works. We have a lot of material already in the can that we can rework in post-production. So we don't want you to think that the radio show is the end-all for Wild Rose Moon. It's not. We really intend to try to create a production house. And the reason for doing that is because it works so well for interns to come in and learn audio engineering and video production. We have plans in the future to put in post-production facilities. Right now, a lot of our post-production is being done off-site, but we'd like to put in post-production in the moon. And in fact, Nicholas Holzer, right here, you're working. If you want to come up and say something. He's quite a bright fellow. And Nicholas is working on, tell him what you're doing for the, for the, the show, you know, the Saturday night, Under the Moonlight.
I, I'm working. I am running the soundboard for the Saturday night, Under the Moonlight, comedy performances. And that involves some tedious processing that, it'll all work out.
Anyway, he's been tremendous, and one of the other projects he's working on is creating some post-production facilities and some recording facilities in our lower level. And so that's really exciting to have him on board doing that. We all have another intern, Elijah Curry, who is also working in the audio side of things. And we're really excited to have him on board. Nathan Waddill, our bass player for our band, is a mentor for them. We also have another mentor that we, that trained at Wild Rose Moon, Jonathan Nixon. He got his experience mixing at the open mic, which is an excellent place to learn audio engineering. And he, I'm proud to say now that some of his income is derived from doing independent audio engineering jobs off-site, not with us, but with others. And those are the kind of skills we want to pass along into the community.
Where can we find upcoming events that you guys have?
Well, online, if you go to Tickets right now.
We have them online on our website. We also have it on our Facebook page.
Facebook page, right.
And we have it plastered across the street on our, on our windows with the posters.
Right.
And it, realize we're parochial about our view about the moon, but we really think you have a, we have a unique model that we're using because we have production, and it's kind of unique for the city. You mean, there are probably very few other cities this size in the state that have the ability to put their name out there. And we've included it already because we just think it's important, it's part of who we are, to say where we're from. And we're happy with the success that other people have had in recognizing it.
During COVID, we produced a, during COVID, we produced a show. Because we couldn't have audience in, we did a show online and distributed that online via Facebook and YouTube. And you can go to our YouTube channel, Wild Rose Moon Media YouTube, and you can see a girl named Tom, which has 51,000 hits on their little art that they did on our open mic online program. We also have a lot of other people who are there. There's a string band from Stark County, which has been able to derive some of their income from jobs that I know that they've gotten from using our URL of what we filmed, and that was with one camera, of their, of their plane at the moon. So again, this helps independent musicians, it helps independent producers and audio engineers. So we're really excited about the educational component of what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions or anything? We'd like to make a motion to do anything here. So if we were to do something, we would probably roll this into my budget. And I'll just give you a little update on that. We've, this goes into the city of Plymouth promotion budget, right? It's the same of it, and so it only goes so far. And so I told them, I think we gave you something this year, and if you want more, you really, I don't have enough in my budget to keep, you know, there's a lot of people. So that's why they're here. So this would, if you prove any amount, this would go into that budget for 2026, correct? So this is for the next 26, and for '27 is kind of your request. So that's where we're at.
What, you mentioned fiscal, what is your fiscal year cycle?
We're on, we're on the same calendar fiscal year.
You're okay.
Yes, yeah. And we just thought it made sense to go with your new fiscal year, because it would start off with a marketing schedule.
January 1st.
Yeah, gives us time to fill the new beginning, the new opening, the beginning, yeah, promote the town.
Thank you.
I guess what I want to say is what I said two weeks ago. This downtown is thriving because of the Reese, the Heartland Center. As I called it, Blue Moon, sorry, Wild Rose Moon.
Too many Blue Moons in this stage.
I make up my own words, you know that. So I just want to say that I honestly think I would love to do this, but I think before we do anything, we better see where our budget is and see, and maybe, I'm going to suggest, maybe we table this, because I want to support it, and see if it could financially fit into our budget or not. So, but I'm totally in support of it. It's just with these tax breaks coming in in two years and where we're at. We don't know where we're going to be until we see exactly where we're going to be. And I think it's a hard sale, it's just like the Reese. I know that we want to support it, but when we're hearing that the money is going to be kept in the state, and they want us to start taxing everybody on other things, I think the city needs to wrap their head around those type of things before we do that. But I'm definitely in support of it, I'd love to see us do it.
So is that a motion? What are you going to do?
No, I'm going to leave it up to other people to talk. Maybe they know something I do. I definitely think it's worth looking into.
I would agree with that.
I would love to do it, it's just...
So if you're making a motion, was that, I mean, I think we asked already, was that a motion to table this so we can further investigate where these money might come from, incidentally?
Well, it would come from, we would have to put it in next year's budget.
Right, I understand.
And we're in the middle of working on all that. And it would be into the city's promotion budget line item. And I don't know.
Is that something you think, Robert, that, I mean, there's four or five of you looking at that budget to see if we could afford it? I just, I don't want this to go negative in any way, shape, or form. I want to see, yes, we can do it. But let's see where our finances are at. That's all I'm saying.
I don't know how to share any more than what we've shared with council members as far as where our balances are, where our things are. I mean, we can certainly go over it again, and that's probably a good time, that would be a good thing to do. But we've shared with even Linda, it got to you finally, didn't I, Linda? And shared with you things that look around the corner, things that are coming our way, where our balances are, where our picture is. And so we can certainly revisit that, though. That would make everybody comfortable. I don't know what else I could say to that.
Well, Dwayne, since you're, you know, you spoke on this, I would encourage you to, you know, if you blew this, we should do what you're suggesting, I would encourage you to make a motion.
Yeah.
And I don't think anyone's disagreeing with you, I think it's just that since it's your thoughts, your ideas.
We don't have to make a decision tonight.
I would encourage you to make your motion.
I'll make a motion that we table a request, look into it, with the hope for that we can do that. We have some time for '26, so I'll make a motion at this point, we table it, and let's look into it, and we'll have some more reading on where we're at with money.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, and a second table. Any further discussion? This will, well, we're going to vote on it. Roll call vote, please.
Call.
Yes.
Agar.
Yes.
Grappel.
Yes.
Melner.
Yes.
Morrow.
Yeah.
Starr.
Yes.
Okay, so we will, I think, have another meeting. We'll come in and go through the spreadsheets again. Plus, we're getting some updated information, so we are working on that. We had meeting the swearing, right, Lynn, and kind of getting a bigger, broader picture of what's going on. It wouldn't be a bad idea, we'll definitely do that. So I'll be inviting everybody in again. I know, I just look forward to those meetings with you guys. Very good, so that's, we'll try to do this as quick as possible. So this would be for '26, but you're probably doing planning process and stuff. And this is part of that, so.
Part of the business plan.
Right. Very, yep, so.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Will you invite us back, or how does that work?
Probably, yes. Give us a little time here, and then, well, if we don't, I don't think we'll have time between now and the next meeting to probably get everybody in to kind of look at things again. I think we really do need a little bit of time to, we're getting information every day on what our budget's looking like right now. It's...
Changes.
It, yeah, it changes, and we're dialing in on stuff, and it's, it's a lot. So it might be a couple meetings out, so, but we'll let you know.
Yeah, like you said, we're planning, we're at the same level of planning where you are.
Yeah.
And for the new fiscal year, so.
Yeah.
We'll give you any additional information you need.
This is July, so this is good timing, yes.
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. You put up with George, do you? Your smile, nodding, yes. Okay. Thanks, Nicholas.
I do want to give you just a very brief One Marshall County update. The various subcommittees have been working through their own focus areas and presenting to the One Marshall County Board with goals and action plans. All of that is coming together to be combined into a strategic plan going forward for One Marshall County. I don't know exactly when, but very soon you'll have some representatives coming just to give you an update and introduce themselves to keep communication going with the full One Marshall County Board. Comprehensive Plan update, I don't have a lot. The mayor kind of stole my thunder with the meeting he organized on Friday. It was great to see a good representation of some young adults in our community. I think one of the important things that came out of that is there are a lot of great ideas, and most of these young adults just don't know how to take action on those ideas. Whereas some of us who've been involved a little longer and are not as young, we may know the proper channels to bring their ideas forward. So I think that's going to be a great partnership, and we should see some positives come out of that very soon. Beyond that, Ty couldn't be here tonight. The other comprehensive plan subcommittees continue to meet. There's some action coming, you're going to see some zoning updates coming in the near future, and some great marketing as well. So just stay tuned for some more great things happening there. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
You could say that the comprehensive plan did a lot in the last year and a half, and now we're at a level where the things that we are bringing forward are kind of, it'd take longer to get done and that kind of stuff. We don't, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, we certainly started with some low-hanging fruits and developed some momentum. There are some bigger things that are in the works, and it's really a lot. I don't want you to think, because we don't give a detailed update, that there's not a lot happening. You know, some days, it's too much to condense into a brief presentation here. If you're on Ty's email list, you'll see that there is an awful lot of stuff going on, and he's doing a great job of coordinating that with the different subcommittees.
But overall, would, Anna, you want to say something? Sure, you may, come on up.
Thank you, sorry. Anna Kittsman, I serve on the marketing subcommittee for the Plymouth Forward Comprehensive Plan. And I did want to just add that one of the things that we've just kind of recently launched and updated was the, was an online dashboard for the public. And so that is available, we're working right now to get that launched. So we're going to be setting up, we've had a couple people volunteer to set up at the Mayor's Month of Music to hand those little, we have QR codes that help take the community to the dashboard, which we created alongside MACOG. They helped us develop this so that there's sort of this at-a-glance dropdown menu, so you can kind of pick and choose the different areas of the comprehensive plan that you're looking to learn about or to see exactly where the city has made some accomplishments, where we are in the process. So it's a nice, I think, digestible way to really, for the public especially, to learn what it is that the city is doing and the things that we're accomplishing. And additionally, one of the things that I thought would have been very helpful, and we initiated, was to kind of put in some hyperlinks of city civic jargon that I started to learn as I was serving on the committee. There were a lot of terms that I just was not familiar with. I was, you know, just a citizen of the town, and I was like, I don't know what that means. And there are a lot of times during meetings, I'm like, I'm going to have to Google this term here. And I thought, well, you know, if we want the community to be able to get involved and learn about the comprehensive plan and get it, and learn about what it is that the city is doing, maybe we have some of those, you know, those terms highlighted so you can just click on it really quick, and then just a little window pops open, or maybe it links you to some additional information so it actually becomes a little bit educational as well. So I did want to just add that that has recently gone live, but we'll be doing a nice big launch of that pretty soon, so, sorry.
Very good.
That's great, thank you.
So again, the work continues on our comprehensive plan, and it's going well. And thank you to all the groups that are, you know, the 60 or 70 people that are involved in all the different groups, so, very good. Does anybody have anything else from the floor tonight? Anybody have anything they want to present to us? We're in none. Then number seven, I'll entertain a motion to approve our acceptance of communications.
Move to accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all fair to say aye.
Aye.
Randy's not here, can somebody?
Aye.
I promised somebody what I'd say.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, thanks. See you, Nicholas. Great kid.